I'll call the business meeting of Florence City Council to order. Please stand. We pray for the wisdom to make decisions that are beneficial to the people represented here, empower us to speak honestly, reflect wisely, and live with integrity. We seek your guidance tonight. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Mr. Carroll.
Present.
Ms. Chambers.
Here.
Mr. Winn.
Here.
Ms. Kemper.
Here.
Ms. Wingo.
Here.
Mr. Osborne. Mayor, we have a quorum. I have for your consideration approval of the minutes of the special meeting of December 4th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Carroll.
Second.
Second, Ms. Wingo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the oath of office for two police officers. And I'm gonna let Chief Mallory introduce them.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we're fortunate tonight to be swearing in two new recruits. They are Austin Messer and Jeffrey Morgan, if you guys would like to come up. A little bit about both of these guys. Austin Messer is 22 years old. He graduated from Campbell County High School in 2020, and he currently resides in Florence. Austin is not a new member to the family of Florence employees. He's been a member of the City of Florence Fire Department and paramedic since 2021. Austin decided he wanted to switch careers and try to go on the law enforcement side. So, we're glad to have Austin join us. Also, we have Jeffrey Morgan. Jeffrey is 24 years old. He is a graduate of Ryle High School in 2018, and he resides in Union, Kentucky. Jeff is a member of the Army Reserve, where he serves as a compact medic. Jeff has been deployed several times during his military career. Jeff recently worked at the Amazon Urgent Care at CBG as an onsite medic representative. Both these guys have just started their online portion of the academy. And then after they get done with that, they'll go down to Richmond, Kentucky to complete their 18 weeks of academy there, and then come back to us. So, please join me in graduating them.
All right. If you could raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof? And that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of police officer of the City of Florence, Kentucky, according to law? And do you further swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, that you being a citizen of this state have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state, nor out of it? Nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons? Nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending? So, help you God. Congratulations. Thank you to the families for sharing your loved ones with us. Next, we have a presentation from Boone County Peewee Athletic Association. I'd like to call up Chris Gunkel, President of the Boone County Athletic Association, to provide an update on our turf project there, 2024 season. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for having us back. We want to thank you for inviting us just to give an update on the turf project and light project from earlier this year. So, we have put together a just brief slideshow to kind of just show some of the highlights from this past season. So, that is a photo of some aerial footage of the new turf that is there at BCPAA. The turf project commenced on March 11th, 2024. That's some of the photos taken in the first couple days where they used the machine to kind of cut up the turf in three-inch, or not three-inch, but three-feet cuts. And they went the whole width of the field and rolled it up. Turf arrived shortly after, I believe, on March 15th, which was way ahead of schedule as anticipated. So, they brought it in, I think, in two semi-loads, and you can see the equipment there unloading it. And by April 15th, the turf project was completed, which was ahead of schedule as well. We were very lucky with weather. I think there was just a few days because of wind and rain. It was delayed a little bit, but that's another great aerial shot of the new turf field. Another shot there.
Looks incredible.
Yes, I would absolutely agree. There's some on-the-field shots there. And you can kind of see the before and after. The before shot, I think, was taken in 2020. And then that was taken a couple weeks ago, actually. We were able to resume our spring flag football season on May 11th. So, we did begin games in March. But with the turf project going on, we were fortunate enough that Boone County High School allowed us to come in, play games there. The relationship with them in the past couple of years has been phenomenal. We are directly in a great relationship with them because we are their feeder program. So, on May 11th, we officially started activities up there. So, that's some of the Rebel teams on there. The pictures were actually taken later in the playoffs where we had several teams win the championship or place runners-up. On May 31st, the light project was completed. That was a huge upgrade for us as far as safety. I've been involved with the league since 2018. And even then, just comments by officials, comments by coaches of how bad the lighting was at the time, it just wasn't real safe for us to play at night. Everybody speaks very highly of the new lights now. Extremely bright, it's extremely safe. We were able to have more night games there this year because people were more comfortable doing that. But the biggest benefactor for us, our treasurer told us this past booster meeting, that we actually, year-to-date, have saved $800 on our electric bill. So, that's gonna be the biggest financial gain for us over the years is it is more cost-efficient for us. So, that's just a kind of a wide-angle view of the new lights. In July, we started our tackle season. We hosted, I think we had eight or nine home games. Does that sound correct, guys? Eight or nine home games. Everybody wanted to come out to us. They wanted to check out the new field. We heard all kinds of great things, just about how great the new turf looked and some of the other updates we did throughout the complex. There's just some additional photos there of tackle football. We do have a fall flag season as well, and our cheerleaders. We did have a ribbon-cutting ceremony on September 11th, where the mayor and some of other council members came out for a ribbon-cutting ceremony. And that's the council members and the mayor with both teams that day, and the officials. I thought that was a great shot. Just some project highlight reports. I know it's kind of hard to read up there, but I'll read them aloud. So, as previously stated, the project started on March 11th officially and was completed on March 30, May 31st, I apologize. The turf replacement, light replacement, and curb replacement are 100% done, with the completion dates listed on there. Moats Group was the turf company involved. Once we ripped up the previous turf, we do have a retaining wall near our scoreboard. And we had noticed that the curb had shifted a little bit, and the retaining wall had sunk. So, we did have an expenditure there that we weren't pre-planning for, but it was kind of pre-built in the contingency plan. But we pulled Mike Furman Construction out to help replace that curb. It is 100% done. And Kenmark Electric was the company that helped us with the light replacement. Some budget overviews. The turf replacement, we had requested $466,859.80. We did use $425,269.37, which was 90% of the total requested. Some things that helped lower the cost, we did get some equipment donated through Sunbelt Rental. That helped lower the cost by $4,500. There was also some other contingencies built in. They had told us that the drainage testing was going to be a huge thing. They anticipated that we would have some drainage problems because the previous turf had been there for so long. They were surprised when we passed with flying colors. So, we had no expenses as far as the drainage testing went. So, we were very fortunate there. We did have a material increase on the light replacement. It was just inflation from the materials from the original quote to when we actually started the install. But overall, from the requested amount, we only used 95% of the requested amount in the original loan. So, that is the budget overview there. And we just, again, want to say thank you to the mayor and to city council for just believing in the power of youth sports. We came here, I believe, last December and heard the impact of youth sports in a lot of your lives. And it meant a lot to us to have the support of the mayor and city council. Special thanks to Josh Hunt for kind of help spearheading it at the very beginning stages, as well as former Chief of Police Tom Grau. So, we thank you very much.
Thank you. This is definitely exciting for our community, and we're just happy to be part of this. Just for anyone who might be viewing, we did make a loan to Boone County Peewee Football in order for them to be able to do this, and we're happy to do that.
How many young men and women do you think participated this past year?
Between all the sports, and I may have to pull Treasurer Secretary in on numbers. Tackle, we had 150 K through eight. Cheer, cheer was at 50.
Ball flag was at 15.
Ball flag, 15.
Baseball, about 60.
60 for baseball, spring baseball.
Spring flag was about 220.
I think it was more than that. 220 is 220. 220 participated in our spring flag, which was a little bit lower because when we rented from Boone County High School, Sundays was the only day available. And that was a big concern for a lot of our families. We're hopeful those numbers go back up with us being open again and be able to have Saturday games. 50 are currently participating in our wrestling program right now, so.
That's awesome.
I do have a check to present. I don't know who to give it to.
I'll take it.
I will take it.
A principal only payment we would like to make tonight.
Do the soccer teams still practice there as well?
Yeah, so Fusion Soccer is still who rents from us. They were there probably more than we were. They love the upgrades. They speak very highly of it well. They're very appreciative of it. But they were up there Monday through Friday, sometimes on the weekends when we weren't there, so. The board like to come up?
Mayor, it's been a very nice partnership that we have with this organization. You guys serve the community, and we try to serve the community. So, we're working on the same side of the street. And we really appreciate all that you all do for the kids. And you've done this for years, and it's just a nice thing to have in our community. And you guys are to be commended for your participation in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for coming. Next, we have a presentation from Tara Johnson-Gnome, Executive Director of the Northern Kentucky Area Development District. She's here to provide an overview of the valuable services that our ad does provide. I'm happy to serve as a board member for this organization. They do multiple things, and they do great work on execute on every level. Welcome, Tara.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for having me, Mayor, and members of council. This won't take too long, but I am happy to be here tonight. And here really because of our board. So, thank you, Mayor, for serving and for Katie, who occasionally, very rarely, actually, serves as an alternate. Tonight, I'm here to really fulfill one of the strategic plan initiatives that the Board of the Area Development District passed earlier this year, and that is additional outreach. Our board, for the first time in a long time, put together a strategic plan for the next three years to ensure that we were out in the community, that we were developing the strategic capacity internally for our staff, and that we really focused on some of the programmatic things that we needed to do for the community. I gave you quite a few pieces of paper. There's one that's just sort of a general overview handout. I really like the back page, actually, because it shows a map of all the different places that the Area Development District is touching, not just 22 Spiral Drive. We are pleased to be an employer of about 80 individuals here in the City of Florence. But we also do a number of other things through our funding. And our staff are really out across our eight county area. And so, anyway, I'm here to talk a little bit about our strategic plan and then to give you a general overview of our services. We work really closely with the staff and with the mayor of the city. But we just, even though we do that, we wanted to do this. We are actually doing this presentation in all 60 of the communities that we serve, of 52 cities and eight counties. I believe we're in the 40s right now. So, thank you for your patience. It's taken us a few months to get to everybody. A lot of meetings happen at the same Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday of the week, as you can imagine. So, we thankfully have our whole senior staff doing this because it is quite the undertaking. But we hope to be finished by the end of January. Okay, so, just for a quick history lesson, I like history a lot. Every county in Kentucky is inside one of the 15 area development districts. We serve eight counties, some serve more, some serve less. We're probably about in the average. And we were created in the 1970s as part of state statutes. So, we, our boards' bylaws are based on Kentucky KRS 147A and Kentucky Administrative regs as well. And so, what does that mean? It means we're not exactly like a normal 501(c)(3), even though we are a 501(c)(3). But we're also kind of this added thing, that we're this quasi-governmental entity. And so, there's certain things that we do in conjunction with the Commonwealth of Kentucky, as well as additional things that we've been asked to do by our local communities. And so, I'm just gonna talk about a few of those. One, our board. It doesn't say in statute that we have to have 39 individuals on the board, which we do, but it does call for every judge-executive and a collection of mayors and citizen members. The bylaws call for those to be divided out by population, with Boone County having, of course, a large population. Boone County has the largest number of citizen members for, as well as Mayor Abujon and currently Mayor Courtney from Walton, and then Pat Rafferty, Caroline Welter, Lisa Wilson Plager, and Marie Schenkel, all from Boone County. All of these lists are on our website and also on the annual report and at the bottom of this. So, if you have any questions about anything, also, all my contact information is here on this document, too. Okay, so, I'm gonna pause here just really quick to talk a little bit about the strategic plan. I just want to highlight two main things that we have worked on so far this year and a couple of things that are coming. So, one thing that happened with the strategic plan is that it calls for really looking at staff capacity. And one thing that we did was we had some focus groups with every one of our communities where had invitation. This was back in the fall of last, 23. And we had a consultant come in, because if we conducted the focus groups, then, you know, you guys are gonna maybe be nicer and not kind of tell us exactly. We really wanted to know, like, what would you like to see? And what we heard from Boone County and Campbell County communities, generally speaking, was that you all wanted more support on the public administration side, like local government services side. And that what we heard from our southern counties, Grant, Carroll, Gallatin, Pendleton, and Owen, was they really wanted more community development and planning work. Because you guys have organizations locally that do that differently than from the ad, but those southern counties, really, they don't have that. And so, we were able to get a grant from the DURF Foundation to actually break apart our local government services team into two sections. Local government services will continue to do public administration, so like tax rate calculation support, staffing all the groups that we staff, the Municipal Government League, the City-County Administrator Association, the Economic Development Group, the Ethics Authority, the Health Board, the Public Works Association, and probably a couple of other ones that I'm not thinking of. They're gonna keep doing that. And then community development planning. Of course, we would be happy to support any of our communities that needed that help, but we know for sure that our southern counties tend to need it more because they don't have often, they have maybe a clerk, but not a, you know, city administrator or an economic development person or other staff. So, Katie Jo Kirkpatrick is now leading that team. It's most of the work that we are already doing here. I'll just go to here so you can see. And then Chris Courtney will stay being the Associate Director for Local Government Services. We also, as part of the strategic plan, have been working because we know that we do a lot of things, as you see in our handouts, and that I'm gonna cover in a second. And we work with a lot of people, and sometimes different communities, especially City of Florence being a great example. You're working with multiple members of our senior staff and multiple members of just our team. And we want to make sure that that is much more efficient and aligned and cohesive than it maybe has been in the past. Rather than being a holding company for different programs, we really want to make sure that we're leveraging those resources. So, we're more than a sum of all those parts. And so, one way that we want to work on that is through creating a customer relationship management software. So, like Salesforce would be something that a company would have. I don't think we're gonna invest in Salesforce, it's super expensive. But we have been investigating some nonprofit-oriented programs, and we actually found one that would be free, which would be great if it works, called Monday.com. So, we will be working in the next year, so next fiscal year, to investigate that. So, hopefully, that when you have an interaction with us, and, you know, maybe if Justin's talking to Cory about something, and then, you know, Josh is talking to me, that like, I would be able to look and see, oh, just as an update, here's everything going on. So, those are the kinds of things that are in our strategic plan. If you look in the annual report, the entire plan is the, like, I think, second set of open pages, just so you know if you want to see that.
We use Monday.
Do you?
So, if you would like to.
Ooh, okay. I will definitely reach out to Melissa then to talk about how you like that thing. Because we just got the trial version like a couple weeks ago. Wonderful. Okay, great. Okay, so, moving on, this is our senior staff. You might be wondering why is there that sort of dotted line there? And that's because Amanda Peters, she doesn't report to me, but we do consider her a member of our senior staff. We serve as the Fiscal Agent and Employer of Record for the Office of Drug Control Policy, but she, they have their own board. But because their employees are our employees, we want to make sure that they're represented on our senior staff. So, Amanda, you know, helps with things of that nature. Anne Wildman is our Associate Director for Aging and Disability Services. And then Cory Imar is our Associate Director for Workforce. Those, like, sort of third line is probably who you guys would most likely interact with. But of course, if you ever needed anything related to our facilities, you can meet Clay Byer or anything related to finance and administration. That is Chris Corba's role. In terms of finance and administration, one of the things we've really been kind of leaning into lately is our ability to serve as that fiscal agent for programs that need the back office support and don't necessarily want to be an entity on their own. So, for the last, I believe, eight year, maybe longer than that, maybe 10 years, we've been the fiscal agent for the Joni Bernard Foundation's Spay and Neuter Program, which has been a great way to control the pet population, which then controls the amount of animals that are in our local animal shelters. So, it really does provide that local government service. They also have a really cute logo. But we're also doing that for Office of Drug Control Policy and the Workforce Investment Board at different levels because we can customize it. We have another nonprofit entity that we will be discussing, Mayor, next week at our board meeting, so not quite ready to reveal that. Board Meeting, so not quite ready to reveal that publicly quite yet, that has come to us and asked for that as well. And that's something that we do for a fee, but not to make any money of it necessarily, but just to cover those costs for our finance team. But since we have that experience of administering over a hundred and fifty-five different sources of funding at the current time, it's a service that we can provide when necessary, especially when local governments want to collaborate in some way. So, moving on, our Aging and Disability Services Team is our largest in budget and also in size of, number of employees. I'd really like to emphasize this team, especially for council members that might be interacting a lot with the public, and of course, staff that would be in, working with the public a lot. You know, as you're out in the community, which I know you are so much, you might come across individuals, family members, neighbors, friends, who say, you know, we have this loved one that we care so much about, and it seems like they're maybe struggling a little bit as an older adult. Maybe it's to care for their home the way that they would like to, maybe it's preparing meals, or even just doing kind of personal care that they would like to. If that is happening, anyone can contact our Aging and Disability Resource Center, either by phone or email, and find out about what resources might be available to them. I know, in my own family, my parents cared for my grandmother for a number of years. She suffered from dementia before she passed, and they, you know, they had means, but they were really kind of at wit's end as far as just day-to-day, constant care. And so, they ended up calling the ADRC just to say, hey, what is out there? This is really a very trying situation. And so, anyone is welcome to call. Of course, different people are going to have different eligibility, but even just to understand what, what support groups are out there that are, that are not, you know, a government program, but that are just things that people might benefit from as they're, you know, in this phase of life that can be challenging. And so, there's also a number of websites kind of tied to that cohort, and so, the ADRC can point people to all of those different things. I would just say, if someone calls, there is quite the need, and so, it can be, it's a, you leave a voicemail and then you get a call back. If, if someone calls and they leave a voicemail, they do need to answer their phone for the next two days if they get a call. I know that's, I don't mean that to sound, but sometimes people don't answer the phone if they don't recognize the number, and then they say, well, no one called me back. Well, they might have left a view of voicemail, because you have to answer the number if it calls. And sometimes, they call from a different, like, line at the ad, so it, anyway, answer the phone if you leave a message, please. Okay. There's a wide variety of things here, I'm not going to get into all of them, but definitely the ADRC is that starting point. And even if we don't provide the service, like, for example, there's the new PACE facility here in Florence that's phenomenal for people that have medical and older, you know, needs of varying kinds. We work really closely with a lot of the different providers in the area, and so, we can help meet those needs. So, definitely, those are out there if you have constituents who are looking for help. Also, this is community development planning that I mentioned that we were able to pull out. I'll just say, for those of you that have been around a while, like me, twenty years ago, when I first started at the ad, this was its own team. So, even though it's new again, this is how it used to be, and so, we're really excited to be able to provide this service. This group will continue to work in brownfields, helping with grant applications, and then this is the team that has been kind of shepherding the housing study and the housing work. I know, Mayor, you're very familiar with that, but for council members, you might remember, I was here about a year ago, talking about the housing study. It's now progressed, and we'll actually be releasing a new report here in the next month or so, giving ideas about techniques that communities could use to address the gaps that we found. And that's been a really wonderful way to collaborate with many different communities that are all at different points in their development. As you can imagine, some of our southern counties would love to have more development, and so, hopefully, these are tools that different communities can use. There's fifty different strategies identified, so. We also perform the Economic Development Strategy for the region, that's now new on our website. The new 2024 one was just approved by the Economic Development Administration yesterday, so. And we can be the contact for water and sewer projects as well. Now, you guys have locally those, again, staff that can help with that, but not all of our communities have that. Local Government Services, we've kind of covered all of this already, except, we do support our local food banks by being the liaison with the United States Department of Agriculture and the Kentucky Agriculture Commissioner. And so, if you know of any food banks that are not currently getting food from us through those programs, they just have to sign up and sign a very easy MOU, and then we can get them both non-perishable, as well as fresh, frozen, and refrigerated food, straight from the state at no cost to them. And so, it can be a really nice way to, like, for example, Fiesta, which is a new nonprofit here locally, we were able to get them signed up, and it, it helped with the work that they were already doing. We don't get to pick what we get, so it's not sometimes the end-all, be-all, but sometimes it can just help what a nonprofit is already working on. So, that's just another example, if you know of a group that's not signed up, please let us know, and we can, we can do that for them. Oh, we do also have a small business lending program. I know in the past, we've had a few different businesses from Florence. I don't think we have any right now, but that's also on our website. So, you know, if anybody knows of a business that's looking for a little bit of gap financing, we can provide working capital, as well as, they wouldn't be able to buy a building with this amount, but we can provide up to a hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, if they needed a little gap to fill, we could help with that. So, again, just reach out. Workforce development, I think you guys know about most of this, but we do have a Career Center that's on your campus here, just down the street, and we help job seekers connect to work and employers connect to talent. That's the easiest way to say it, and we do that in a lot of ways. We've got state funding, federal funding, local funding, that is combining to make that happen. We try to take the mystery out of it, as far as the different programs. If an employer needs help, we can help them at least strategize how to find talent, it's a pretty tight market right now. We have about seventeen thousand open jobs in northern Kentucky last month, so it can be challenging for employers to meet those needs. So, our team knows, you know, what's all out there and can help. So, if you are working with an employer, or if they just say, gosh, I'm really struggling to find somebody, please encourage them to reach out to us. NKY Works is our new initiative, that's a local partnership between Boone, Kenton, and Campbell Counties, as well as BNKY, the Economic Development Entity for those, for the three county regions. So, again, if they're a job seeker, they can call the Career Center. If they're an employer, they can call NKY Works, and we can get them the help that they need, so. This is all the partners at the Career Center over there, and this is NKY Works, they've got a really snazzy new website. Also, they're constantly posting new information on LinkedIn, just kind of about the labor force overall. So, it's been pretty interesting, I think, to follow and kind of see what they've been up to. So, if you don't follow them on LinkedIn, I would encourage that, too. That is actually my whole presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions or take any feedback. Really, this is about making sure that you all know to contact us if you have anything that you'd like to work on together, you'd like us to do. So.
Anyone have any questions for Tara?
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for having me and.
You have a lot of irons in the fire, don't you?
Yes, sir.
That's nice. Yeah. A lot of services, and we appreciate that you're right here in town.
Thank you. You know, we kind of updated our mission statement recently, it was pretty lengthy, and we changed it to just three words, collaborate, empower, and convene. We're a little unique, because we do big regional things, and then we do direct service to individuals, and so, that's the empower part. And then, the collaborate and convene is, we just want to be a good partner. You know, if communities don't need us, that's totally fine, but there's a lot of times that we can at least just be a sounding board, and we want to do that if we can. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara. Thank you, Tara, for all the work that your team does.
Do you want me to leave this here? Okay. Thanks.
All right. We still have a call. So, we should. Okay. Okay. Next is a municipal order approving an inter-local cooperation agreement between the Housing Authority of Covington, Kentucky and the City of Florence, Kentucky. Municipal Order MO 172024. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Ms. Wingo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Nguyen. We did discuss this at our special meeting, and it is a agreement that needs to be updated because of changes that Covington is undergoing. Ms. Hunt, do you have anything else you need to add to that, or is it?
Yeah, you had it. I was there. It's this, City of Covington is, is giving this section of the program to the Covington Housing Authority. Because we're part of the consortium, we have to approve it to allow it, so, that's essentially what it is.
Any discussion? We have a motion in a second. So, all in favor, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Mister Carroll.
Oh, aye.
All right, Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mister Nguyen.
Aye.
Ms. Kemper.
Yes.
Ms. Wingo.
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes five-zero.
Next is Municipal Order MO 182024. It's a municipal order approving the reappointment of Lois Evans to the Florence Board of Adjustment and Zoning Appeals for a four-year term. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Ms. Wingo.
Second.
Second, Mister Carroll. Any discussion? We did discuss this last week as well, the special meeting. Ms. Evans has served on this board and does a good job for us, so we'd like to bring her back, or continue her service, I should say. So, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mister Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mister Nguyen.
Yes.
Ms. Kemper.
Yes.
Ms. Wingo.
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes five-zero.
And the next MO is a similar situation. It's a reappointment for Duane Frohlerker to the Board of Adjustment. So, it's a municipal order MO 192024, Municipal Order Approving the Reappointment of Duane Frohlerker to the Florence Board of Adjustment and Zoning Appeals for a four-year term. Is there a motion to approve? Mister Nguyen.
Second.
Second, Ms. Wingo. Any other discussion? And I believe Mister Frohlerker does serve as Chair of this committee, or this Board, so. Roll call vote, please.
Mister Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mister Nguyen.
Yes.
Ms. Kemper.
Yes.
Ms. Wingo.
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes five-zero.
Next item, Municipal Order MO 2024. It's a municipal order approving the reappointment of Gary Nguyen to the Board of Directors of Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana Regional Council of Governments. O.K., aye. Is there a motion to approve?
Salute.
Mister Carroll, second by Ms. Wingo. Mister Nguyen will not be voting, correct?
Correct.
This, or this municipal order pertains to Mister Nguyen, so he will not vote. So, roll call vote, please.
Mister Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Kemper.
Yes.
Ms. Wingo.
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes four-zero.
Mayor, I'd like to thank these people for serving the way they serve. It's a, we need people like this, citizens, to step forward to do what they're doing.
Well, it's not, they're not high-paying jobs, that's for sure. They do it for the love of the city and the love of helping, helping their communities, so. Ordinance O 232024 is the next item for consideration. It is an ordinance relating to the adoption and the approval of text amendments to the Boone County zoning regulations, text as applicable to the City of Florence, Kentucky. These text amendments being to Article 40, Section 4000, Article 5, Section 505.1, Section 505.2, Section 505.3, Section 505.4, and Section 505.5, modifying the definitions of electric, electric vehicle charging station, public, and gasoline filling station. The effect of this ordinance is to adopt zoning text amendments modifying the definitions of electric vehicle charging stations, public, and gasoline filling station in order to comply with KRS 100.326, which became effective July 15, 2024. The full text of ordinance O 232024, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the Office of the City Clerk of the City of Florence, Kentucky, and the Florence Government Center, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve? Mister Carroll.
Second.
Second, Mister Nguyen. Mister Hunt, would you explain this?
Yeah, so, I mean, we discussed this last week, we really kind of have no choice but to implement this text amendment. This was in response to a recent law change, which basically required cities and counties to treat fueling stations the same as what they would with electric vehicle charging station. Really, just, it's changing the definition within the existing text in the Boone County zoning regulations. Doesn't impact us greatly, just because it's two different use categories. Electric charging stations, you go there, you're sitting there thirty minutes to an hour, it's not a super-high turnover, whereas a fueling station or a convenience store, a lot more turnover, really, two, two totally separate things. So, we still have avenues, from a zoning perspective, to prevent use categories going into certain areas, if that makes sense.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mister Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mister Nguyen.
Yes.
Ms. Kemper.
Yes.
Ms. Wingo.
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes five-zero.
We have Ordinance O 242024, an ordinance of the City of Florence, Kentucky, amending the budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year of the city, Amendment Number One. This ordinance represents an amendment to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget for the City of Florence. The purpose of this amendment is to reflect the following changes in the city budget. One, the incorporation of the prior year audited fund balance amounts for the fiscal year 2024, year-end audit. Two, carryovers for budgeted operating and capital items from the prior year. Three, increases in estimates for capital projects and expenditures for the current year. And four, increases in all departments for personnel costs due to personnel policy changes in the authorized positions and pay plans adopted in October 24th, Ordinance O 182024. The full text of Ordinance O 242024, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the Office of the City Clerk of the City of Florence, Kentucky, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during normal office hours. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Ms. Wingo.
Second.
Second, Mister Carroll. For discussion, we did discuss this at our previous special meeting that we had last week. We did have a presentation from our Finance Director. Council was given opportunity to discuss with him. So, is there any other further questions?
It's primarily housekeeping that we have to do at the middle of the year.
Yeah, we do, we typically do budget amendments every December, and then every June. The December ones are always to update with any changes in the beginning fund balance for the year that the auditors have determined, as well as any carryovers of money that wasn't spent for the budget that should have ended June 30, 2024. So, if there's nothing that, things that weren't spent as of June 30, 2024, they were carried over into this budget amendment, and then there is the personnel item that was listed as well, so. Is there any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mister Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mister Nguyen.
Yes.
Ms. Kemper.
Yes.
Ms. Wingo.
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes five-zero.
Next, we have a reading of Ordinance O 252024. It's an ordinance amending, updating, and revising Florence's current Personnel Policy The purpose of this ordinance, O 252024, is to adopt and approve a new City of Florence Personnel Policy Manual. This revised Personnel Policy Manual ensures compliance with the latest federal and state mandates. In addition, the revised Personnel Policy Manual updates the city's employee benefits package. Key updates to the Personnel Policy Manual also include, but are not limited to, expanding ADA and reasonable accommodation policies, adoption of a more robust harassment and complaint procedure, amendments to the alternative sick leave program, updating of confidentiality and personnel records policy, creation of an addition to a generative artificial intelligence policy, adoption of a revised pregnancy and paternal leave policy, and the addition of a consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act or C. a Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, or COBRA, policy. The foregoing and other changes to the Personnel Policy Manual are designed to enhance employee satisfaction and make the city a more attractive place for employment. The full text of Ordinance O 252024, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the Office of the City Clerk of the City of Florence, Kentucky, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during regular office hours. Is there any discussion?
This really is one of the biggest things we've done in the last several years, because we're bringing our personnel policies up to date with the law and current standards. It also helps us to be able to attract people to work here, and right now, we have shortages in every area of employment, so this is a move in the right direction.
Any other discussion? We need a motion. Motion to approve?
Some of.
Ms. Wingo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Winn. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Ms. Kemper?
Yes.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next is Ordinance O 262024. It's an ordinance relating to personnel, thereby amending ordinances, ordinance numbers, O 42024, O 92024, O 132024, and O 182024 relating to job descriptions, authorized positions, and the pay plan. The purpose of amending Ordinance O 262024 is to create a standalone ordinance which addresses job descriptions, pay plan, and lists of authorized positions, thereby removing all references to the city's approved and adopted Personnel Policy Manual. In all other respects, Ordinance O 262024 adopts and incorporates all provisions relating to job descriptions, pay plan, and lists of authorized positions as currently in effect. The city has adopted by a standalone ordinance, O 252024, provisions of the revised and updated Personnel Policy Manual. The full text of ordinance O 262024, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the Office of the City Clerk, City of Florence, Kentucky, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Ms. Wingo?
Second.
Second, Ms. Kemper. Ms. Kramer, would you care to, do you have anything on this? You're just updating ordinances, is it, is just required because of the last?
Yes, we're just updating ordinances and pulling out all of the ones from the different ones through the years since 1990s that it's been updated, so. And then just reinforcing everything from O 18.
I do commend Melissa and her associate, Brandy, our Assistant City Clerk, who worked very diligently to identify all of the ordinances where the previous pay plan was referenced, and really working on getting us a very clean ordinance so that from here on out, that we can have just one central point to refer back to. So is there any other discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Ms. Kemper?
Yes.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes five zero.
For the mayor's report, that we did have our Christmas tree lighting. I think it was beautifully decorated in the Government Center, and hats off to our events team, Tina Benjamin and Gianna Pretolini, as well as Melissa Kramer and her staff as well, who made double as Mrs. Claus, don't tell anyone. So she did a great job, as well as everyone. I think it looked very festive in here. Public services helps a ton, getting everything set up and taken down in a very timely fashion. Just great, great teamwork and coordination from our departments for that event, and we thank all of our departments who were represented that night as well. We did have a Christmas card contest, and we will be delivering those Christmas cards along with some additional Christmas cards from Florence Elementary. I got about 100 cards coming from Florence Elementary also to our senior center, and so we'll be happy to deliver those to the seniors in our community and just make sure, make sure that they know they're not forgotten, and we do appreciate them as being a member of our community. Just a reminder, the Florence Government Center will be closed on Tuesday, December 24th and Wednesday, December 25th for the Christmas holiday. We will resume regular hours on Thursday, December 26, 2024. The Florence Government Center will also be closed on Wednesday, January 1, 2025 for New Year's Day, and resume regular hours on Thursday, January 2, 2025. The city will have a tree cycling pickup on Thursday, January 2, 2025. Trees must be placed at the curb the night before to be collected. Please remove all tinsel ornaments, ribbons, and lights. Please do not place trees in a bag. Contact the City of Florence Public Services Department at 859-647-5416 for more information. And the city will have a tree, Christmas tree cycling drop-off also at Stringtown Park, which is 7340 Burlington Pike, December 31st through January 5, 2025. Please remove all tinsel ornaments, ribbon lights, and bags, and drop off no later than 5:00 p.m. on January 5, 2025.
Anyone on council desire recognition? Any department heads? Anyone in the audience? We will have one more meeting this year. It will be next week. We will do a swearing-in of our new council, as well as recognition of our outgoing council members. We will be doing a lot of second readings on these ordinances that we just had first readings tonight, so we should have, you know, quite a bit of a business agenda as well, and.
Executive, closed.
What'd you say?
We have closed session, just a reminder.
Oh, we do have closed session tonight. That is correct. I am so sorry, I got ahead of myself. So just for the viewing public, we would encourage you to watch, come to or watch our, our meeting next week, and we will be meeting again after the first of the year. So I do need a motion to come into closed session. It is pursuant to KRS 61.8101C litigation proposed or pending against or behalf of the city. Is there a motion? Mr. Winn? Second, Ms. Kemper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we will return to this room to adjourn. We do not anticipate any further business taking place after the closed session. Thank you all for coming.